Okay, welcome. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open this up for the initial public comment. This public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in the initial public comment section? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the initial public.
That was quick. My name, address?
State your name, please.
Michael Adams, Ten Hillcrest. I currently live above Bobanria. I have for probably 12 years or more. They're great neighbors, good friends. I don't really know a lot of the details about this, but I know that it's the... What they have now has been there for a while, because I drive by it all the time to go to my house. I think it's a great improvement from what they did have. They were struggling with their carport, covering it for their cars. I see no problem with it. It doesn't block anybody's view. They look into a mountain. It's just... And no sightlines with the traffic or anything, so I really don't see a problem here, but I just approve for the passage of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will have a time for public comment for the actual item. You're more than welcome to come forward and speak at this time, but we will have a public hearing and public comment on the actual item for agenda as well. Anyone else wishing to speak during this initial public comment? No hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the initial public comment. Agenda item number one for possible action, approval of the minutes of the July 17, 2019 regular meeting. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries for possible action number two, V-19640, Mindy Gubler, 306 Ridge Road. Susan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is the actual owner of the property, but she's acting on behalf of her mother and stepfather, the Zemers, who've lived on the property, and this has been her mother's family residence since 1974. Last year, it was discovered that the Zemers had a garage built in the front yard without a building permit. Mrs. Zemers stated that she believed the person she hired would do the work properly, although she did not hire a licensed contractor. Because the site plan that was subsequently submitted did not show the setbacks correctly, and because it appeared that there were one or more encroachments onto other properties, a survey was required so that we could determine exactly how many variances were necessary as a result of this garage. And as you can see from the survey and plans that are in the packet, and Holly, I'm gonna go to the PowerPoint now. Thank you. This is the survey that was done. The home and garage are actually aligned to the side property line, but the property lines are not perpendicular to the street, and the street does curve in front of this lot. Therefore, only a corner of the garage actually encroaches into the required front yard. However, a tiny portion, just a few inches, also encroaches onto the city property to the west. And as a result of the survey, we found out that apparently up to almost a couple of feet of the house actually encroaches on adjacent property. In addition to that, they have a shed at the rear that encroaches onto the neighbor's property, but they claim that was done with the neighbor's permission many years ago. This variance is not dealing with any of the encroachments on adjacent properties. It's solely dealing with the variances on the actual property that result from the garage being built. And as the title indicates, it's technically four variances that are needed, all stemming from the fact that detached buildings are not allowed in front yards. The staff report goes into quite a bit of background information regarding this, and the key thing that the applicant argues is that based on the existing configuration of the lot and the existing structures, that there's no other practical place on the property on which to actually locate a garage. The staff report then analyzes the four aspects of the variance, first being that it's a detached building in the front yard. Secondly, that the actual front setback is... Would be less than what is required for, you know, principal or other structures on the property. Third, the side setback is less than required. And lastly, the garage results in too much of the lot being covered by enclosed building area. The staff report evaluates all of those. The applicant did quite a bit of her own research in terms of other properties in the neighborhood and ones that have similar circumstances. And being that this is a historic federal-era neighborhood and not one that was actually formally platted like the rest of the town site, but it sort of happened, and lot lines were sort of imposed after the fact, apparently. There are a number of non-conformities in this neighborhood. Nonetheless, the planning commission must find in favor of the five criteria per code in order to approve any variance request. And so there are findings that the planning commission can use to either approve or deny the request. If approved, there are three recommended conditions. Number one, that the applicant shall obtain the required building permit for the garage and shall make modifications as required, if any, by the building official or other departments to meet applicable code requirements. The Zemers did apply for the permit after the fact last year, but that's when we discovered the site plan didn't have nearly enough information and had incorrect setbacks shown. Secondly, the applicant shall pursue the acquisition of city land on which encroachments exist, including the required five-foot setback area, subject to approval by the easement holder in the city. The city council has the authority to sell land for lot line adjustments. That's at their discretion, but sort of making this more challenging in this case is the fact that the encroachments occurring onto 100-foot-wide easement governed by NV Energy. And traditionally, they are usually very loath to allow any encroachments, but Mindy, I did get a contact person there that I can forward, you know, his information to you so that you can get in touch with them. And lastly, the standard condition that if approved, that the variance approval is based on the plans and information that you have before you, and the variance is only for that which is shown and advertised. And if approved, it doesn't mean they could expand the garage even more without having to come back for further consideration.
And before I open it up to the panel, appear for questions of staff. Procedural question, are we able to take the variances as a lump sum and do this? Or do we have to take them one by one and break them out and vote independently?
Oh, no. This is the type of variance where you can approve it, you know. Being that the structure is already there?
Absolutely.
You're kind of being... You have to approve it all or nothing anyway.
Okay, so I'll ask if later down the road, a motion one way or another, that if we do, whoever presents it, that it does encompass all variances as an all or nothing. So I'll open it up to the dais. Any questions of staff? Yes, Nick?
I need to make a comment before we continue with the discussion. Just disclosing that I have a strong personal acquaintance with the occupants, as well as the applicant, and I just want it noted. I feel I can be objective in this, and we don't have any other financial or anything relationship, but I do want that to be noted.
Susan, you mentioned, well, the history of McKeeversville. It was here before there was even Boulder City. And one of the questions I had was, how did that come to be? Probably '60, '61, thereabouts, that the city sold off the land to the lots. Was there any recorded survey at that point in time? I mean, this house was built after Boulder City became a city. Do you know how the home was to be built over the lot line in the first place?
Well, the home was added on to over the years, and the applicant, I'm sure can give you a lot more background on that than I can. From what we can see in the file, there was more than one addition done to the home over the years, and it was a later addition, I believe in the 80s. We have some very poor plans in the file, but that's the nature of... With state law allowing owner builders to do their own plans. And the addition onto the basically northwest side of the home that encroaches onto city land occurred later. It was not part of the original house. And from what we can tell on the plans, the, you know, the owners believed they were building on their own property. The site plan is very poor, but it shows that they thought they were going to have a setback between three and six feet to that side property line. But obviously, you know, hindsight being 20/20, and survey tells all. I mean, they were off by several feet as to where they thought the property line was.
Gotcha. And another question, the... Has the city building inspector gone out and looked at the structure that is there? And do you know if they believe that it's structurally sound?
Yes, he hasn't done a formal inspection, but he has been to the site and looked at the plans that were submitted after the fact. And he didn't raise any serious concerns about either aspect. But like I said, I don't believe he or our plans... Plans checker has done a formal review yet, so that's why there's a condition that if there are any structural changes necessary, that's a condition of approval.
Because one of the things that I saw when, and I did do a site visit, is the... If you're looking at the garage head-on from the opening, the left wall is built on top of a stem wall. And it just concerned me whether that was, I don't know, contract or anything like that, but it just concerned me that it wasn't built on a typical footing that you would find.
Again, that will be something that the building official and our plans checker will verify.
And if the plans checker found that it wasn't structurally sound, then they have to tear it down and start all over again, or what?
I wouldn't know that that's necessary. Like I said, the building official has been out there. He's aware of it. We could see that apparently the late Mr. Waters, I believe, had started those walls years before. And supposedly, they're extensive and beyond what would normally be required, but that will be evaluated.
Mr. Chairman, I think to reassure the commission, as the department is evaluating it from the building permit aspect, we will ensure that it complies with the building codes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. In what year was the easement lot line set? Was it after the two dwellings, meaning the dwelling that they reside in and the one behind them? Was that done after those two dwellings were there, or was it done prior to that?
The 100-foot-wide NV Energy easement predates pretty much, I believe, everything, because the lot, you know, the lots were created around the easements. There's more than one of those easements that cuts through that Lakeview addition or McKeeversville area. And because basically, the dam and the power came first. So it looks like all of the lot lines were created to abut that 100-foot-wide easement. And in this case, as Mr. Lassoff pointed out, the original house was actually built during the city era. It was not one of the houses built during the federal era.
Thank you.
Steve, any questions? Okay, I've got a couple of questions for staff, and then we'll invite the applicant up. We've got the conditions, and I know we're getting ahead of ourselves before a motion, but in the conditions, there isn't a timeline set in there. Is that something we can add procedurally to say within a certain amount of time for each of these steps? Or are we gonna give them carte blanche freedom to take this at their own time?
It's not really necessary to add a time limitation, because right now, what we have is an outstanding code violation. So it took quite a bit of time to get the occupants to realize that, you know, a survey indeed would be required, and we couldn't get them to the planning commission until we had that done. They have finally taken care of that, and the owner appears willing to move forward with taking care of things.
But are there other mechanisms at the agencies from the city level, from NV Energy level, that now that we've identified these discrepancies, are they on a timeline right now to purchase the land from the city if that's what's required? Get the exemption from NV Energy? Or is that on us to shoulder that responsibility to kind of put that timing mechanism in place?
It's not up to the planning commission, and as far as...
Perfect.
The condition regarding that, all we... All the commission can reasonably do is require that the applicant pursue the acquisition of city land. There's no guarantee that the city would actually sell the land. And actually, obviously, it's wise for them to approach NV Energy first. If NV Energy refuses to give them any blessing, you know, to allow that part of the structure to remain on the land, it's... They may not need to purchase the city land. I don't know if NV Energy would force the removal of those additions or not, but that would remain to be seen. But basically, we, you know, the planning commission nor staff can force NV Energy to do anything, nor can we force the city council to do anything. But, you know, the applicant is well aware that this does create a rather large cloud over the property. And it may not necessarily be a problem as long as, you know, they own it. But as we know, properties do change hands eventually, and it would be difficult to sell the property with this type of known, you know, encroachment.
So our variance is because the wording in there, we would say, is pursue these types of things. Nothing would happen to the variance if they were failed at one of the other levels or one of the other things?
Correct. I mean, what we can force is them obtaining the building permit.
Fantastic.
I do have a question, if I can, Susan. Is there a precedent for the city and other easement managers to sell property in this type of case or other similar cases?
I know that whenever inquiries... Inquiries have been made over the years as to whether, when somebody has proposed something in an easement, such as parking lots or RV parking. I mean, there's a number of areas in Hemingway Valley where multiple family subdivisions and townhome developments abut these easements, and they've wanted to be able to use those easement areas because they were forced to buy them. And from what I've heard traditionally, the answer is always no. However, I saw on NV Energy's website with regard to encroachments and their easement that they did stress the word typically, that those requests are declined. So at least it leaves a little wiggle room that they are willing to consider, you know, cases. And in this case, obviously, there's an existing circumstance, you know, that... You know, that they'll need to consider. But no, I don't know. I haven't heard of any cases like this. We're not aware of any where actual land sales have occurred within these easements due to encroachments. There's another former easement that cuts through this neighborhood that was abandoned some years back, and it took us quite a number of years to get formal paperwork stating that it was abandoned. And so now the city owns... Since we own the underlying land in all those cases, we have been selling off adjacent parcels to clean up lot lines, and one or two other parcels can be put up for sale by the city because that line was formally abandoned. But this is definitely an act of easement.
So it really depends on NV Energy whether or not this proceeds to be able to be a compliant...
One would presume so. I'm not an attorney, but it will only solve part of the problem for the applicant if the city were to force them to buy that easement. But NV Energy won't effectively give a blessing, because that would still theoretically create a cloud for any, you know, future potential buyers. The city cannot use the land for any purpose. But the normal procedure when we find that owners have encroached on city property is to tell them, "Well, you either remove the encroachment or you buy the land." You know, so we wouldn't ignore that. But in this case, as I said, the NV Energy factor is something that we don't have control over.
How does the city come to a determination of the cost of land in a case like this?
Appraisals.
Who bears the cost of that appraisal?
The applicant.
And that's in compliance with NRS?
Perfect. No other questions of staff? We'll invite the applicant up if they've got anything to present. Otherwise, entertained questions from the panel.
I'd just like first, excuse me. I'm feeling a little under the weather, so my voice is not so good. Excuse me. I'd just like to thank the city's town.
Can you start off just by stating your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes. My name is Mindy Gubler. It was unaware to me that there was an encroachment. Excuse me. And as soon as I found out that there was, I immediately talked to Susan about... She was the one that showed me and we looked at the plans. I immediately reached out to Brock Armentraut, and we had already talked about that, because I wanted to, excuse me, take care of that right away. So you've already talked, excuse me, over figures. He did talk to me about appraisals. The only... There's some concerns that I have is that two appraisers have to... Excuse me. I'm so sorry.
Would you like some water?
I have. I have some.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me. I appreciate it. The appraiser, from what I understand, is it costs $1,500, so there has to be a minimum of two for prejudice reasons. The land, you know, Brother... Mr. Armentraut had spoken to me about how they, you know, he did a quick figure of the cost of it. It looks to me like it's going to be... The cost of the land will actually be less than what the appraisals will be. From what I understand, I don't want to refer to it this way, but it is a... This is how it was put to me, a useless piece of land that could never be done with. And I was trying to still try to find out what the easement was. Susan, do you happen to know what the boundary is for that 100? It's 100... Did you say 100 feet?
It's 100 feet wide.
Is there any kind of leeway in that, between that encroachment and the easement? Do we know what the measurements are?
Of the easement's exact... Exactly 100 feet wide.
It's exactly 100 feet wide.
Yeah, the easements coming up from the dam are all pretty standard. They're usually 100 feet, 200 feet sometime, generally between 100 or 200.
So that's my concern. When I was talking to Mr. Armentraut, he said that there wouldn't be a problem purchasing the land. It happens all the time, is what he had told me. But I can honestly say that when my father built that, there was a wooden fence there, and he literally took the fence out and built the wall where the fence was. I honestly do not think he did it on purpose, you know. I really, really don't. It was an honest mistake. And yes, in the back, there was an agreement between the neighbor to that he would build the wall and that they would make that property line like that. And I didn't get the same kind of reaction that maybe I read from Susan, so I don't want to speak in her terms. I just want to make sure I'm all on the same page. I'm under the impression that Brad is willing to do a lot line adjustment, which would give me that 1.3% that I need for the 45% coverage. There's also been talk about converting it as a carport versus a garage. The definition, from what I understand, is a carport, it has to be open on at least two sides. I couldn't get a firm definition of what "open" means. But there's a door on one side, excuse me, and a window on the other. I don't know if you would consider that or not. I don't know. I'm just trying to look at all angles. All angles and possibilities. But I know I didn't address the encroachment on there, because I was advised to just focus on the garage, and that's why there's nothing in there that talks about it. But I didn't want you to think that I wasn't going to address it, because I literally went down from Susan's office down to Brock's office, wrote him a note, called him that same day, because I realized it was an issue. Sorry? The footing. So the footings, as Susan mentioned, they are... Will exceed expectations for footings. It is definitely sound. It is definitely overdone, way overdone. So I don't think there would be a concern on that. There is an example on 100 Pyramid, same situation where it's built on the wall itself. So, and in that corner, I mean, not to justify, you know, if you're not gonna do... If you're... When you're doing a variance, it has to be 20 feet. It has to be 20 feet. But it's not 20 feet all the way. Like she said, it is on a curve, so it's just that one little part that's not. Also, putting it at a zero variance on that side would help, because it will also kind of help out with the purchase of the land. It will help with... There's nothing... I think a lot of times, they do that five-foot setback for fire purposes as well. And in the report that Susan had typed up, I think that would be one of the considerations is to not even do a five-foot setback, but to do a zero setback. I have no intentions on selling the property. However, at some point, I will die. I don't know what's gonna happen. So it would be, you know... I do want to get this taken care of. I'm trying to... I'm in a kind of a position to kind of... I'm in an awkward position. So... Do you have any questions for me? Excuse me.
Yes, and before we open up the questions, I just want to... Some points of clarification for you and then for some questioning here. As far as permits, inspections, everything that's through the city and the inspection, that's not what we're discussing here this evening. So that'll be addressed with the city and the inspector level. Appraisals, that's gonna be between you and the city of Boulder City, once again.
Okay.
Not at our level. We're dealing with a handful of variances. So I know that it's a very complex situation. We're only one stop on this very long process. And as far as the easement, once again, NV Energy. So all of those types of things are not only out of our control, but not of things that we're even really...
Addressing.
Gonna address or could even be help out. I mean, even if we're champions for you on this, our hands are tied.
Okay, good to know.
So really, it's gonna go down to the variances alone, and that's what our role and responsibility along this journey is for you. Just for point of clarification on that.
No, I appreciate that, because I wasn't exactly sure, so I didn't see Brock here.
Yeah, so we're taking it down from a 15-hour meeting to, you know, just addressing the variances here. So I'm gonna open it up to questions of the applicant, if anybody's got anything at this time. No? No? We're letting you skate off easy. We've got no questions for you.
I don't know. I don't know what your answer's gonna be yet.
We've got no questions for you. We may invite you back up to do some follow-on if we need.
Okay.
We're gonna open it up to a public hearing, hear from the public out there when they call you back up. So thank you so much.
And I would like to thank those that have come, too. I appreciate their input, so thank you.
Absolutely. Given this is a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open it up. For anyone wishing to speak on this, it must be related to this. That's all right. It's all public comment, so please come forward, state your name. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Trobiani. I live right across the easement from Bobanria. We share the easement. I see no issue with it. Actually, the first time we saw it, we said that it was how great it looked. As you drive around the corner, it doesn't block anything. It's an improvement for them. They get into a shaded vehicle now, and she's not walking through dirt and on her way to church, is from what is explained to me. So our family has no issue with it. I don't think any of the neighbors do. So our family has no issue with it, I don't think any of the neighbors do, and we, I mean, anything Nevada Power probably owes Bob some money, because he's always out there cleaning their easement. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ken Carpenter. I'm a Boulder City resident. If you'll allow me to use my notes, because I, first of all, the area of McKeeversville is a very old section of Boulder City. It has bumpy roads, little call for city service, and is also a surveyor's nightmare. Mostly void of city, cement blocks around their houses. It's a place where neighbors talk, they help, excuse me, they help each other. And in some cases, in every case, in our area, we have a yearly party for all the neighbors. They all come together. It's a little unusual for Boulder City. Regarding the 306 Ridge Road issue, the persons involved are senior citizens. They're in their late 80s and not in good health. This is working on them. I see them almost not every day, but weekly anyway. They hired a contractor in good faith, thought he was an honest person. They thought this contractor was going to secure all the permits needed so the building would be in compliance. Evidently, sadly, that didn't happen, and here we are. I believe there's not a, there is no issues that cannot be resolved amicably between this and Boulder City. Boulder City is a great place to live, and better yet, it's a greater place for the people that live there. With there, there's no violation too egregious that can't be solved in an equity manner. With respect, I hope the committee will see through and grant a variance to end this unfortunate situation. I thank you very much for listening to me. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, please.
I did read through everything quite carefully, and I do understand that area of the city can be difficult. My main concern here is that had they come, applied for a building permit, and come before the committee prior to actually building it, but it's kind of like we've gotten into such a habit of asking for forgiveness instead of asking permission. I mean, I realized when I, I had to get a couple of building permits when I moved here, and I realized what a hassle it is to get everything, and everybody has to be approved by the city, and everything has to be just so. And I understand that, and it is a pain in the ass. But the same token, it gets rather difficult to sit out here knowing I jumped through all the hoops like I was supposed to do, and other people come and ask for forgiveness instead of doing it the right way. So the decision is up to you, but I just want to make a statement that I am, it is very frustrating to sit here and listen to this time after time, especially when the lady knew she was not hiring a licensed contractor, and then did not make sure somebody got a building permit. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it around up here for any discussion. Anyone wishing to kick us off, or I will coke you, please?
I'd like to state, being a real estate agent and selling in that area, there's a lot of issues in that area. Also, being a real estate agent, you've got a hot mess on your hands here, because we can help you with one piece, but you won't be able to sell that house until you solve all your little issues around it. And I do truly believe it was an honest mistake. And I personally don't have a problem with the issues, because having sold down there, the lots are all substandard, a lot of people believe their lot lines are there, and I think it's a good idea that the city now is requiring to have the lot line surveyed down there, because that's going to help a lot of people solve that issue, because people went out, like my dad was in construction, he'd go out there and measure lot lines and do it himself, and we pray to God that they were always on the right lines. But I think in, back in the day, that's how a lot of things were done, is we'd go out there and build them and build them up. And I don't know what happened with the contractor, I think, I truly believe they thought he was a contractor until they found out he was not a contractor. So I'm going to go along with the honest mistake, and I don't have an issue with the variance.
Perfect, thank you. So I'll echo those same sentiments, and really, you guys have a long road ahead of you. You have other city, you have other agencies, you have other headwinds that could tell you to change things, change foundations, update buildings. Frankly, I don't know if NV Energy has the authority, I think they probably do, to have you rip part or all of it down. You've got a lot of stuff ahead of you. Going through this packet, this is not a variance that, given the lot size, the shape, the everything, that's out of the ordinary. It clearly states that there is something obscure about this. The fact that the building's on there, you've got a whole bunch of headwinds ahead of you, your neighbors are in full of support with you. I don't think it's our responsibility to stop this at this level, so if there's no other conversation, anything else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and to, along with staff recommendations.
And the conditions?
And approve all the, well, I have to come up with something for each one, don't I?
No.
No, 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 no. Approval with the conditions.
Oh, with the conditions, is what I need to say. Okay, I thought I was going to have to come up with. Let's put my little hat on real quick. So I make the motion to approve with the conditions.
And I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
And I've got a motion and a second. I will call for the vote, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, monthly progress report.
No comment.
Item number four, public comment, anyone wishing to speak during the final public comment period? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close, meeting adjourned.
Bye, Ernie.
Bye, Ernie.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.